Redistricting is a big deal. Today, I want to say good morning to everyone and welcome everyone to being on the call this morning. Really appreciate it. And Toni Ann sends her regards. And I spoke with her day before yesterday, and she is very thankful for all the support that people have shown her. And y'all know Toni Ann, right? She's advising as we go through all this as much as she can. She provides valuable help every week. I want to be sure and thank the team. Shirley Martinez is on and letting everyone in. And Pat Hastings, who helps us think through all the issues. She's dealing with COVID right now, but hopefully she's going to be a lot better next week. Erica Watley gets out all of our emails. And Karen Marshall, who provides the chat questions. And I want to remind everybody that if you have a question this session, this call, please put it in chat and Karen is going to read the question. So we're going to stick to that protocol for sure. And as y'all know, the Democrats are out there raising cane, you know, trying to get Texas to draw maps that really don't reflect our majority view here in Texas. And so we need to be educated and participate in this process so that we can have a voice. And I really want to thank Senator Hughes and Chairman Click. And unfortunately, Representative Jutan had a conflict today, so he won't be able to be with us today. And to start us off, I know that Chairman Click, you have a conflict. You're going to have to leave us halfway through the call. So I thought I would ask you a question. The team had looked into redistricting, and the big question is, what opposition lurks in this redistricting process? Could you sort of give us a view into that?
You're going to have a lot of Democrat affiliated organizations going and wanting particular maps drawn a particular way. You know, it's real important that people that want to participate in the public hearing process do so. I mean, I've had my mind changed by public testimony in the past. When we're looking at maps, keep in mind, you might see a body of water on there, but it's still relatively flat. And you can't see some natural boundaries sometimes that help form communities of interest. You know, look in your own backyard, in your own area. Do you kind of feel like in your particular area that it would make more sense that your district would be grouped together with the small city in the next town because they are all in the same school district? Being in the same school district could be a community of interest. You know, in some other areas, you know, and I'm in an urban area, but there are some smaller cities that make up my district. And in one of my cities, they do not even have a grocery store. And so from a community of interest perspective, where do the people gather, shop, do their business? And so it's real important for that community to have the neighboring city in the district because that's where everybody shops for clothing, groceries, whatever. You know, school districts in a lot of communities are the hub of the community, you know, Friday Night Football, all of that. And so it's important that those communities of interest stay together in any map drawing process. You know, you, as a resident of an area, can give us more feedback because it keeps you in a flat map. There may be other geographical boundaries in your community that quite frankly, you can't see on a map. And having lived there and owned a business there, worked there, you have a better idea in your day to day life as to what communities of interest are rather than us just looking at a map. So that feedback is very, very important. You want a transparent process, which I do believe we will have with Chairman Hunter on that committee. But, you know, what would you like to see in your community, your districts to look like? Who are the folks in your community that work together and, you know, form a community of interest? Every district is different. You know, we have 150 districts in the House. And quite frankly, some of the congressional districts are different for other reasons as well. But, you know, the map drawing process is tedious, is time consuming. If your elected official is on that committee, please thank them because they are putting in very, very long hours. Oftentimes, having to travel the state to do redistricting hearings, that is a very time intensive committee. So that's kind of all I have on, as far as an update. It sounds very simple. Communities of interest, keeping those folks together so that the people in your community have a voice.
I mean, isn't it, haven't you seen Chairman Click that the other side is really alleging racial division or racial, that they're disenfranchising the minorities when in fact, you know, that's really not the case?
Well, we don't really even have a map yet. And we're already being accused of, you know, being racist when there's no map. And quite frankly, it's not new. I've been involved politically and have been through several redistricting cycles, not as a legislator, but as a county chair and party activist. And this is very common. They always, whenever they disagree with us, there's a charge of racism.
And it really seems to be, I've been watching some of the hearings, it really seems to me that it's not, they just want the Democratic districts drawn. They just want the Democratic majority districts.
Why, of course.
And I thought it was interesting too, in some of the maps I was looking, especially around San Antonio, the House districts on the inner city, they have lost a lot of population according to the census, whereas the suburban districts have actually, they've grown significantly. So there's actually more people in the suburban areas. So perhaps, you know, it would be good for the committees to take in consideration the suburban growth.
And I believe that is one fact that they are considering. I mean, if you've got a community that they're fixing to build another 5,000 houses in the next two years, that would be something that you would want to consider in drawing your maps.
So that's another thing that people could go in and testify to.
Right. And it's not something that we can look at on a map and tell. Only citizen input would be, you know, the best source of that information.
That's a really good point. Well, we really appreciate you participating this morning and give us an update and sort of a view into how the testimony does make an impact on the committees. And really, thank you very much Chairman Click. And we're going to move over now to Senator Hughes. Senator Hughes, I know that you're on the Senate Redistricting Committee. And the other question that the team had is, you know, what districts does the Senate have authority to draw?
So, good morning, and thanks for covering this process. And I know it's, we all realize it happens every 10 years, but it is kind of a mystery to many of us. And the law changes over time. In fact, there's been significant changes coming out of the U.S. Supreme Court since the last time we did the districts. Good changes. And so the law says that after the census, you know, we're going to draw these lines. And so I know you guys get the concepts, but, you know, one person, one vote, they used to say one man, one vote. But that comes from a 1963 Supreme Court decision, and Justice Douglas said, "The conception of political equality from the Declaration of Independence to Lincoln's Gettysburg Address to the 15th, 17th, and 19th Amendments can mean only one thing, one person, one vote." Of course, unquote, of course, that's why we do it after the census because, you know, we want to catch up on how the population has shifted. And so representation of districts, whether they're Texas Senate, Texas House, U.S. Congressional, or State Board of Education, all of which, you know, we'll be drawing, they have to have equal or nearly equal populations. And of course, they have to be drawn in a manner that doesn't have the purpose or the effect of denying or bridging the right to vote on the basis of race, color, or language group. And so the law has changed on that because you guys know what a gerrymander is. We all hear that term, and you probably know it comes from the governor of Massachusetts back in 1812, Elbridge Gerry, signed a map, created a partisan district in Boston that looked like a salamander. So, poor guy, that's what he's, I guess it's better than having a disease named after you, but that's where we get gerrymandering from. And so, you know, there are two terms you'll hear a lot. You'll hear cracking and you'll hear packing. I bet you've run into those or seen those. And so what is cracking? Cracking is when you dilute the voting power of a group by spreading them out, stretching them out across multiple districts, right? You might have enough of a certain group in an area where they could be the majority in a district, but you'll draw the district in a way that stretches them out so that they don't have enough in any one district to have a significant voice. That's cracking. And the other term you hear is packing, and that's just what it sounds like. Let's say in an area you have enough of a certain group that they could be a major influence, maybe even a majority in one or two districts, but instead you draw it in a way that you draw a super, super majority for that group in only one district. So where they could be influencing or even a majority in two or more districts, you pack them all together in one so that they only have influence in one district. That's packing. So cracking and packing, you hear a lot about. And there's been a big change in the law since we last did this. And it has to do with gerrymandering. So historically, of course, we don't, we can't, we don't do gerrymandering. We don't discriminate against people based on their race. We don't do that. Historically, there were also limits on political gerrymandering, you know, laying aside race. There were limits on what the party in power could do to the other party. And it's always a political process, but the Supreme Court had sort of vague rules about how compact the districts had to be and things like that. But the U.S. Supreme Court has ruled fairly recently that political gerrymandering, political, not racial, but political gerrymandering, where the party in power draws districts in favor of that party, that is not a problem under the U.S. Constitution. And of course, the Supreme Court's right. The U.S. Constitution does not speak to this. So this is the first cycle, this will be our first redistricting cycle under this law where the law says a political, drawing lines to favor the party in power is not against the law. However, it is against the law to draw those lines to favor, to disfavor a racial group, right, or an ethnic group. And of course, we're not going to do that, of course. So that's the process. And again, we'll draw Texas Senate, Texas House, the U.S. Congressional districts in Texas, and State Board of Education. And Chairman Click described that public hearing process. You know how that goes. So normally, normally this process would already have been completed this year, but as you know, we have to get the census data from the feds. And the practice has always been, they do the census in that decennial year, 2000, 2010, 2020, et cetera. And then toward the end of that year, the beginning of the next year, they send the data to the states, very specific detailed data at a very granular level. And we need that to draw those lines. Because of the COVID-19, because of the Rona, and we think because the Biden administration was messing with Texas, we did not get the data when we were supposed to. Instead of getting it late last year or early this year, we didn't receive the data until a couple of weeks ago, the detailed data that we need. And so that's why here we are in a special session starting Monday. You know, this Monday, the 20th, we're going back in special session to do redistricting. The committees have been meeting, as Chairman Click described, you know, those have been mostly virtual, mostly on Zoom, because COVID-19 has prevented traveling around the state as much as we would have liked to. But there's been a very open process for input. So that's been going on. And so here's the next steps politically. We'll go back on the 20th, starting that process. And there's sort of an etiquette in the legislature about this, believe it or not. We do have, we do have some rules that we follow. And that is for the lines for the Texas House, the Texas House of Representatives, they will draw, they will come up with a map. And a redistricting map is like any other bill. It's got to be filed by a member, it's got to go through committee where there's an opportunity to amend it, it's got to come to the floor where it can be amended, and it's got to pass, then go to the other house, same process, then finally a version goes to the governor for his signature or for his veto. So the Texas House will be in the, will be drawing new maps for the Texas House. Over in the Senate, we do not have a role in passing of those House maps. And here's what I mean. While the Texas House is working on their maps, over in the Texas Senate, we're working on our maps. And the practice has always been, the House is going to send us what they want for the Texas House, and we're going to send them what we want for the Texas Senate. And we're going to pass their map, no questions asked. We, the Senate, will pass the Texas House map, no questions asked. And the Texas House will pass our Texas Senate map, no questions asked. In fact, there used to be, there's kind of a neat process that we can do if there are not too many protesters at the Capitol. I know most of us on this call have been to the Capitol. When it's time to pass those maps, the House maps and the Senate maps. So let's say the House has passed their map and sent it over to the Senate. And let's say the Senate has passed their map and sent it over to the House. When it's time to pass those, it's customary to open the doors to the House chamber, the Senate chamber. You'll recall from the Capitol, you go through two sets of doors to get into each chamber, right? So the process has been, you open up all four of those doors. So the Lieutenant Governor and the Speaker can see each other from one end of the Capitol to the, they can just barely see each other, but they're looking at each other. And so while the Senate is about to pass the House map, and the House is about to pass the Senate map, at the same time, the motion's made, and then the Lieutenant Governor and the Speaker almost simultaneously will raise the gavel and pass the bill. It's sort of a trust but verify, right? We're making sure they pass our map and they're making sure we pass their map. So that process is underway, and hopefully by the end of this special session, we'll have those maps done. Now, the really, those are pretty contentious because, let's say I'm a state representative, I live in an area where the population, maybe my district has not grown as fast as the rest of the states, the rest of the state's population. And maybe my area is going to, maybe, for example, East Texas where I live, or West Texas, a rural area like West Texas, where the population is shrinking in certain areas, they're going to be, maybe there's, I'm just going, this is just a hypothetical, maybe there's five Texas House districts in a certain region, but because other areas have grown faster, suburban areas have grown faster, maybe that region, instead of having five state reps, is now going to have four state reps. Well, that's pretty tough if you're one of those five state reps, because there's a political process we go through, and invariably, members will become paired. Let's say you and I represent neighboring districts, and we both get put in one. It's no fun, it's part of the process. So we'll be going through that, and of course, drawing those U.S. Congressional maps. As you know, Texas today has 36 members of the U.S. Congress, based in Texas, and we're now going to have 38. You'll recall, there's a total of 435 U.S. House members, and those House seats are distributed all across the country by some population. And so as population moves around the country, as people vote with their feet, right, as people leave those high tax, high regulation states like California, and New York, and Illinois, as they lose population, and Texas gains population, Florida gains population, the conservative states gain population, so we pick up congressional districts. So we're going to go from 36 members of the U.S. House here in Texas to 38. And those districts are going to follow the population. And so you'll likely see one of those new districts in North Texas, generally in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, probably see one in the greater Houston area. But, and again, all the districts move around. And so look for that. So as an individual person, all things equal, you'll see the most change probably in your U.S. Congressional representation, more change than you'll see to the Texas House or Texas Senate. Now, one more thing I'll mention, and this affects the shape of the districts. For those Texas Senate districts and those Texas House districts, we can have a 10% difference between the largest district and the smallest district. I mean, in population, right? We talked about how, you know, one person, one vote says that they have to be equal or nearly equal in population. So for the Texas Senate, for the Texas House, those districts, the largest district can be 10% larger than the smallest district. That's, we have that much room to kind of wiggle. And that allows us to try to respect county lines and not, you know, not make the lines too arbitrary or too granular. So, but what about U.S. Congressional districts? The population in those U.S. Congressional districts has to be balanced perfectly to a person within one person. So we're talking about hundreds of thousands of people in each district, and each one has to be balanced within one person. So you'll see those congressional maps, the lines are a lot more squiggly because we have to go in, to get that district to balance perfectly, we have to go into a town, to a neighborhood, to a subdivision, to a census tract, and split, 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 to get it balanced perfectly. So those maps tend to be a little bit uglier, but that's because the population has to be balanced perfectly. And in all these maps, in all these maps, of course, we're going to follow the Constitution, we're going to follow the law. We are blessed to live in a conservative state, and the majority of Texans vote conservative. And so you're going to see maps that honor the voting patterns of Texas. There are certain rules that are, again, constitutional, legal, based on the law and follow the voting patterns so that the voice of Texans are represented. Historically, there have been efforts to, in many states, to make it, to hurt the rights of minority voters, and of course, we don't do that. And there's certain rules we have to follow to make sure that doesn't happen. When you have a district that's drawn, that is a majority-minority district in the U.S. Congress, for example, once one of those districts is drawn, that district has to be protected. And so when you draw a map, you cannot do anything that has the effect of diluting or weakening minority representation. And of course, we're not going to do that. And you know what's happening in Texas? Our Hispanic population is growing dramatically. And so Anglos, Anglos are still the largest population group in Texas, but Anglos are not over 50%, right? So no, so no one group is over 50%. We are approaching, you know, over the next couple of censuses, over the next several years, where we will be a majority Hispanic state. And so again, this is part of the process. And let me step aside and be political. We are blessed in Texas by the fact that our friends in the Hispanic community, generally speaking, are conservative, pro-life, pro-family, patriotic, hardworking, pro-military, natural Republican voters. So this part is not about redistricting, this is just about politics. As we continue to get to know voters and share our message, we're going to be fine. You know, the Democrats for years have been saying, oh, demographics is destiny, and once Texas becomes more and more Latino, then we're going to win. Well, you've seen, that is not happening. You've seen what's happening in the Rio Grande Valley, how well Republicans are doing, how well President Trump did. And so that's going to continue if we do our part. So we have nothing to fear from that. And so we'll go through this process, drawing these maps for the House and for the Senate and for the U.S. Congress. And again, just like any other map, if the House and Senate don't get a map passed, or if we get a map passed and we send it to the governor and he vetoes it. If we don't get that done, there is a backstop. There's a backstop. And I hope this is not too technical, but is it okay if I spend a moment and talk about the difference between the Texas House and Senate maps and the U.S. Congressional maps? Because this is important. There is a, many of you have heard of the Legislative Redistricting Board. It's often abbreviated, the LRB. Well, that's made up of five statewide elected officials, Lieutenant Governor, the Speaker of the House, the Attorney General, the Land Commissioner, and the Comptroller. Those five statewide, well, the Speaker's not a statewide elected official, but he's elected by the House. So the Speaker and those four statewide elected officials make up the Legislative Redistricting Board. That was put in the Texas Constitution back in the 50s, and it says this, "If, in the regular session, after we receive the census data, if the House and Senate cannot agree on maps, or if the governor vetoes the maps for the Texas House and Texas Senate, then those five statewide officials will draw the maps for the Texas House and the Texas Senate." Now, what about U.S. Congressional maps? If the legislature cannot agree on maps for the U.S. Congress, or if the governor vetoes the maps for the U.S. Congress, those U.S. Congressional maps cannot be drawn by that five-member Legislative Redistricting Board. Those Congressional maps would be drawn then by a federal court. And so, and again, that's sort of a, you know, luck of the draw, what judge you end up with, what judges you end up with. And so that's where basically, we can already see the Democrats' tactics. They've already sued us. You've probably read about that. Before any maps were drawn, the Democrats have already sued us to try to get this redistricting process in front of the federal courts. And of course, we believe redistricting should be done by the people through the legislature because the legislature elects the legislature, I mean, the people, pardon me, the people elect the legislature to do this. That's what it's about. You may have heard about independent redistricting commissions, right? Bills have been filed in Texas to do that. And that's come up in testimony in these public hearings. People say, well, I want to have an independent commission drawing the lines. Well, here's the, then they say, that's going to take politics out of redistricting. But that's kind of a joke because redistricting is inherently a political process, right? And the people who are, other states have tried this independent, so-called independent redistricting commission. And the people who were appointed to that commission are political people. You know, no one can remove that. We're all political people to some extent. And so when states have gone to these independent redistricting commissions, what have they done? They've kept the politics in, but they've taken the accountability out because this independent commission is not elected by the people, does not answer to the people, and it's done in this smoke-filled room, and there's no transparency to the process. And again, there's no accountability. And so even though redistricting is a messy process, the way we do it, we think, we know it's important, it's fundamentally important, that the people elected by the people of Texas are the ones who draw the lines. And so that's where we are. Now, as you know, this could affect, this could affect the schedule for our primaries next year. And because it is so late in the year, and because we are just now receiving this redistricting data, we're sort of under the gun to get these maps drawn. Our goal, our goal is to have these maps complete and passed to the governor at the latest by the middle of November. We should be able to do it before then. That's why we're starting September 20th. We should have plenty of time. But if there's a delay, if there's a problem, if we end up in court too much, and we don't have these maps passed before the, too far, before too close to the end of this year, you know how it goes. If you're going to run for office, you need to know where the district is, right? And so normally, the filing period to run for the House, for the Senate, for the Congress is normally the month of December, right, in that odd-numbered year before the election year. So the December of 2021 is normally when you would have the period to file your paperwork to run for the Texas Senate, Texas House, U.S. Congress, State Board of Education. If the lines are not settled by that time, then that filing period has to be pushed back. And that means that the primary elections are about to be pushed back. And so some of you will recall, this happened to us in the 2012 election cycle. Because of redistricting, because of redistricting litigation, we had to move the primary back, had to move the runoff back. And so many of us who were, those of us who've had races and were in primary runoffs, we went to the state convention not knowing if we were the nominee. You know, we were still waiting, we were in the middle of the primary runoffs when we went to our state convention. So all that's still up in the air, but we have the legislation passed if we need to. up in the air, but we have the legislation passed if we need to, to push that, uh, to push that filing period in the primary day back. But our goal, our goal is to get it done promptly in this special session, uh, you know, so we can stay on the regular schedule. But just be confident that we're going to, we're going to follow the law, we're going to follow the Constitution. That's not, the, the law, the rules are a little bit muddy. The Supreme Court, uh, you know, uh, is not always clear, but we've studied it, we know the law, we have good lawyers helping us. And so we're going to get this done. And, and Texas is going to remain, because it's a conservative state, and it continues to vote conservative, you're going to see, uh, congressional lines in Texas House, Texas Senate lines that fairly represent the people of Texas, represent their political views, uh, every race, uh, every language group. And the good news is, we can play by these rules and, and win, and we will. So we're, uh, so we're, 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 uh, we're encouraged about that. That's what's going on. And again, behind the scenes, this is tough bare-knuckle politics because some districts in rural areas are going to go away. They're going, those districts are going to, going to be shifted to fast-growth suburban areas. And that means some of our rural representatives are going to get paired. And again, I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not involved in this process in the House, but that's just, that's just how the process is. And so again, our, we have, good Republican majorities are going to be fair, they're going to work with everyone. But we are going to see some changes. So many people on this call will have different representatives, different senators, different members of the US Congress, uh, after this process is over. But the goal is to have this done timely so that we can, again, go on with this process. So, uh, so we're encouraged about it. I will say this, one more thing. I mentioned to you that the Democrats have already sued us. And when you, when you file a redistricting case in federal court, you file that in the district court, you get to choose where you're going to file it, pretty much any district court in the state. You file that in front of the district, the district court. And then the appellate court, in our case, the Fifth Circuit, the appellate court of the chief judge of the, of the Circuit Appellate Court will appoint two more judges. So you have a three-judge panel that hears redistricting cases. And so where the Democrats sued us, we're in front of a, a Democratic federal judge in San Antonio, a former member of the Texas House, a, a smart person, a, a, a judge who has historically ruled against Republicans in redistricting. So it's no surprise the Democrats filed it there. And we're not questioning that judge's, but that's just how the judge has historically ruled. He has ruled against Republicans. The, uh, so when that case was filed in his court, the Fifth Circuit had to appoint this panel. And so the three-judge panel we have is this judge, uh, in, uh, this Democratic-appointed judge in San Antonio. And then our, then we also have District Judge Jeff Brown from Galveston. Uh, many of you on this call know Judge Brown. He was a member of the Texas Supreme Court, very sharp, follows the Constitution, conservative judge. And then we also have, from the Fifth Circuit, Judge Jerry Smith. Judge Smith, I believe, is a Reagan appointee, been there a while, conservative judge. So on this three-judge panel, we have two Republicans and a Democrat. And let me just say, the political appointment, the political leanings of the federal judge should not matter. If they follow the law, we're going to be fine. We know that politics invariably enter into it. So we're encouraged that we have two Republicans and one Democrat on this panel that's going to hear this first redistricting case. But yes, you're going to hear all kinds of claims about minority representation, but know that we're following the law. And, and again, the great news for us politically in Texas is, uh, that, uh, everybody's voice matters. And, uh, when we go through this process, as we see our Hispanic population grows, that's a positive thing for Republicans. The Democrats were just, were just salivating at the thought of increased Hispanic population in Texas. But now they're figuring out they cannot take those voters for granted. Neither can we. We've all, we got to get our message out. But isn't it wonderful that we, conservatives, we have a winning message? We have a message of opportunity and hope and prosperity, uh, and, 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 and a rising tide that lifts all boats. And so, uh, that was a lot more than you wanted to hear. And Miss Base, I hope that hit the high spots you were looking for. I will finally shut up and yield for questions or corrections. But that's kind of the overview that you and I talked about.
Right. I, I think it was very helpful. I did not, I did not realize that the congressional districts had to be correct as to one person. That, that, that's a-
Isn't that crazy?
Yes, it is. And the, so on the congressional maps, do the House, does the House start with congressional maps? Or is it sort of a joint process between the House and the Senate?
That's a very good question. For those US congressional maps, we're both working on those at the same time. And that gets real political, too. You know, many of you, uh, many of you, of course, we all know Speaker Tom Craddock from Midland. He was, he was Speaker of the House, uh, back in, uh, 2003, when we had a special redistricting session. And, uh, and of course, uh, as we went back and forth in this process, it was very important to him that West Texas be drawn in a certain way. And, and Speaker Craddock is a very smart guy, very effective legislature, legislator. And of course, he was Speaker at the time. And so, uh, we ended up spending a lot of time on that. And so everybody has a voice in the process. It's a political process, goes through committee. Uh, so yes, both the House and the Senate will be working simultaneously on those congressional maps. And you know how it goes. I mean, you're going to have members of the House and Senate, some of them, believe it or not, for some reason, you're going to have members of the Texas House and the Texas Senate who want to run for the US Congress. That's not a promotion, by the way, and I say that respectfully to the members of Congress, but, but you're going to have members who want to do that. And so, you know, within the rules, within the law, they're going to be looking to draw a map that, hey, I think I could run if we drew the districts like this. And of course, Chairman Click talked about communities of interest, those state senators, and especially those state representatives. They know those districts so well, right? They know where those school districts are. And, and not only that, they know that, for example, over in my district, in, in Camp County, you have people, take the communities of Mount Pleasant and Pittsburgh. It's important they be together for a number of reasons. One is, uh, Pilgrim's Pride is such a huge employer that everybody in those two, it's the biggest employer for both those communities. You wouldn't know that from looking at a map, even from looking at school district lines. But the state, the state senators and the state representatives, we know our districts, and we know where those communities are. We know that, uh, you know, historically, this group has tended to gather together as a community, and this is, and they do things together. And these, this is a high school sports rivalry. All those things enter into the process. But yes, on those congressional maps, the House and Senate will be drawing those at the same time. And we're going to fight. I mean, we're going to hash it out. It's going to be, it's going, it's, we're, uh, it's going to be a tough process. We hear from the members of the US Congress, normally the members of the US Congress will come visit us during session to, because, you know, they're, it's kind of tough being a member of the US House because they do not have a vote in what their maps look like. We get to draw their maps. So they're real nice to us, uh, every 10 years. Uh, no, in fairness, they're nice, most of them are nice to us all the time. But we hear from them. And, uh, so yes, the House and Senate will both be working on those US congressional maps simultaneously.
Thank you. Hey Karen, have you got some questions? Can you put, can you put Senator Hughes on the hot seat for us?
Oh, it's all fired up and ready to roll. All right, let's go.
All right.
All right. The first question that came in today is from Alan Vera. He asks, will Governor Abbott add Benton Court's SB 97 to the call for the third special session?
Uh, great question. So I hope everybody on this call knows Alan Vera. That guy is testimony. And I can say this about many people on this call. I got to mention Alan. His testimony, not only this session, but consistently over the years, his testimony, sharp testimony with details, with facts, with documentation, his testimony has done so much to shape election law in Texas in a good way. Senate Bill 1, I've talked about DM, I guess, I could go down the list of people. If you think about people who've testified before the legislature consistently with solid information backed up, Democrats can't shake him when they try to, when the Democrats try to cross-examine Alan Vera, they normally back off after one or two questions because they realize he knows more about it than they do. But anyway, so thankful for him. And so his question, Senate Bill 97, that's the audit bill, right? A lot of us have talked about the forensic audit of the 2020 election cycle. And as we know, you know, Texas, you know, President Trump won Texas, and the numbers reflected that. We kept our majorities in the House and the Senate in the US congressional district. But still, there's, we'd like to know what happened. And so, and toward the end of this, this special session, we passed Senate Bill 97, an audit bill, sets up audits going forward and, pardon me, and audits going back to 2020. And so that bill made it through the Senate, but it was not on the special session call in the last special session. So the governor is considering putting that in. I'll just tell you one more thing. Take a look at Senate Bill 1, that election integrity bill we passed, because there was an amendment added to it. Now, Senator Cole Course, had Lois Cole Course, our great senator from Brenham, you know, represents a big swath of, of Texas, you know, coastal bend, uh, Houston, even Houston suburbs, and up toward, over toward Brenham. Senator Cole Course had already passed a really important bill with paper backup for electronic voting and risk-limiting audits. That was already done. Then there was an amendment added over in the House to add, uh, to add audits. And it's interesting, the language of that bill says, we start in 2022 and we go back two years. So the lawyers are looking at it now to see if the authority may already be in Senate Bill 1 to do the forensic audit of 2020. So that's a long answer to Mr. Bear's question. Uh, the governor, I don't think he's, he has not announced. And I don't know if he's decided whether he's going to add it to the special session call. The lawyers are, are looking at it now to see if we need it. We may already have the authority with what we passed in Senate Bill 1. So stay tuned on that.
Hey Karen.
The next question comes from Tom Novus. And he asks, did SB 13 move precinct chair election to runoff to allow counties more time to redraw precincts?
And I'm going to, I confess, I do not have the details on that. I believe that's true, but I'm embarrassed, Tom. Doggone it, there's another guy that knows a lot more than me. Uh, let me get you an answer. I do not know. Chairman Click may know, someone else on the call may know. I think that's right, but I don't know. I apologize. Let me find out.
All right. He'll circle back to you, Tom. In the meantime, Thomas McCaskill asks, I live in a fast-growing area, northeast DFW metro area. Houses and apartments are being added daily. What is the best way to input those in drawing boundaries?
Yes. So I mentioned to you that, I mentioned to you that, uh, on those Texas House and Texas Senate maps, we can have a 10% difference, right, between the smallest and the largest. And so we take that into account. So when we're in a fast growth, when we're looking, so the districts all have to be about the same size, but there can be a 10% difference. And so when we draw those maps, those fast-growth suburban areas we're talking about, we tend, we try to make them just a little smaller because they're growing so fast. We know that it just, over the course of the decade, before we come back and draw the lines again, they're going to grow faster, they're going to get bigger. And so we do try to take that into account as much as we're allowed to. So, uh, so if that makes sense, we try to allow for that growth in those fast-growth suburban areas. Now, of course, on the US congressional maps, we're not allowed to do that because they all have to be balanced perfectly. To give you an example, uh, you mentioned the Dallas-Fort Worth suburbs. So if you look at the Texas Senate districts today, and of course, we're, we're under maps that were drawn in 2011. And so here we are 10 years later. You can look at the growth. Uh, some districts in West Texas are way below the average population because they haven't grown as fast. My district in beautiful northeast Texas is down, not as much as some of the West Texas districts, but it's down because we've grown, but not as fast as the state. Now, the district that has grown the fastest, the district that is 200,000 or 300,000 people over the average, well, that's Senator Jane Nelson, the great, the wonderful Jane Nelson, who we're going to miss. Her district, again, in, in the general region you're talking about, it's grown so fast that it's, it's got hundreds of thousands of people more than the average district has. So, so that's how we try to do that. Since we can have, we have that 10% distinction between the biggest and the smallest, we're allowed to do for Texas House and Senate. We try to draw those fast-growth districts a little bit tighter, knowing they're going to grow faster. Now, as far as apartments go, apartments are a challenge just politically. You know that. Apartments are a challenge politically. It's more difficult to connect with folks there. They tend to be in and out. Uh, and, uh, depending on the district, you know, apartments can be an area where, where, where Democrats are able to ring out more votes than we are. But again, we try to allow for that fast growth using that 10% difference in sizes of districts that we're allowed.
Next question is from Bonnie Seelig. She asks, is submitting a comment online to the House or Senate committee the same as submitting video or personal testimony? And is, is doing both allowed?
A great question. And so to, uh, to become part of the official record that the courts are going to look at, as a rule, it's best to do the, the video testimony or live testimony, if that's an option. That's ideal. But both the House and Senate have a portal where you can submit written information. It will be looked at. And so yes, if you want to have a voice in the process, that written information is just as good. And in redistricting, because it's so closely watched by the courts, and because it probably will, it's going to end up in court, even your written information is, at the end of the day, going to become part of the record. So yes, you can do both, uh, you can do either, but either one counts. Uh, there, there really, in many ways, the written information is important because, you know, uh, you might not remember exactly what someone says during a hearing, and we can go back and watch it. And many people, senators and reps and staff members are watching those hearings. But if you can do that and back it up with something in writing, that's ideal.
All right. Drake Cameron asks, how is population defined in the redistricting process? By inhabitants? Or what other demographics are considered? Is citizenship or registered voters taken into account?
That is a great question. And I don't know if Sue Evenwell is on this call. Sue Evenwell, my, my Titus County chairman, you know Sue, been involved in the party and Republican women for years. Uh, Sue was the plaintiff in a lawsuit. A conservative group brought a lawsuit on this very subject. And so it's interesting, the law says, the law says, again, it's not just voters, it's population. But, uh, the understanding is, we are supposed to count citizens. Here's the problem, as a practical matter, as a practical matter, the way they, the way they do the census, uh, they're not able to tell who's a citizen and who's not. As you know, President Trump wanted to put citizenship, uh, in the, in the census process, and that didn't happen like it needed to. And so a couple of things there. Uh, a couple of things there. Um, it's supposed to be citizens, but because there's no way for us to prove who's a citizen and who's not, at the end of the day, everybody gets counted. So what does that mean? For example, let's talk about Dallas. There are districts in Dallas, uh, in urban areas in Dallas that have grown significantly in Hispanic population. Many people there are not citizens. So you have Texas House districts, for example, in urban areas, where they have the same population as a district in a suburban or rural area. But if you look at the number of voters, there's not near as many voters because so many of the people there are not citizens, not eligible to vote. But everybody gets counted. And unless someone can go in and show, oh, look, this person's not a citizen, these people are not citizens, everybody gets counted in the process.
All right. You kind of touched on the next question, uh, a bit from Charles Walde. He asked, how does immigration impact redistricting?
Yeah, certainly does. So it's all about that census, all that he replied, who participated in the census. Uh, and of course, many times, you know, people who are here illegally are not participating in the census. You know, they're, they're not out looking to be, oh, look at me, here I am. So, so that, we have to remember that. It's all driven by the census process. We are bound, whatever the feds give us in that census data, once it's officially approved and sent to us, we're stuck with that. So you bet, immigration is a factor. It certainly is. Now, uh, the, the, this, the real crisis we have, and you know, we've been talking about the border crisis for years. It's always been a crisis, but man, it's a crisis. You get it. I've talked to, I've talked to those DPS troopers, uh, I've talked to DPS troopers three or four times a week. And I talk to these guys who are fresh from the border. And they've been to the border before. And they say, it is nothing like we've ever seen. It is the violence, the volume of people coming, the aggressive way these coyotes are acting. So it's aggressive, we know. We don't know how many people are streaming across our southern border. The good news is, that didn't get real, that didn't, this current crisis was not going on, uh, before the census. So that's the good news. So the census data we're working with should not be affected by this, this overrunning we've seen on the southern border since Biden has been in the White House. That's the good news.
And Paul Yammerick asks, uh, first he says, thank you for the House congressional explanations. And he said, please highlight and explain the State Board of Education parameters and process, such as the aspects in district size and more or less representatives.
Great question. So state, so, uh, so let me just give you a little- Great question. So state, so, so let me just give you a little perspective on the size of our district. So the average state representative in America, if you look around the country, to all the states, the average state representative represents about 70, 75,000 people. That's average in America. In Texas, a state rep has almost 200,000 people. So much, much bigger districts. The only state with bigger state rep districts than ours is California. They have about 400,000. But no other state comes even close. So your state representative represents more people than almost any state rep in the country. What about the Texas Senate? It's even more dramatic. The average state senator in America represents about 175,000 people. The average state senator. And of course, your state senators in Texas represent over 900,000, almost a million people. Our districts are much bigger than US congressional districts. Well, think about that. In Texas, we have 31 Texas senators, we're about to have 38 members of the US Congress. So that's how much bigger our districts are than theirs. So in the Senate, sometimes we get to thinking we're big shots, because our districts are so big, you know, because there's 13 of us, 31 of us for the whole state. State Board of Education, imagine dividing the state of Texas into 15 districts. Those districts are huge. Those districts are obviously twice as big as a Texas Senate district. So pushing three times as big as a, as a, well, two and a half times as big as a US congressional district. So those districts will be drawn as well. And those districts are so big. And you, you know, you'll, I'm sure you've talked to someone, will find out that your state Board of Education person also represents an area hundreds of miles away from you in many cases. So it's dramatic. We'll be drawing those lines as well. And, you know, and let's just say, talk about that politically. You know, that board is so important. As conservatives who care about the future of Texas, and who have children and grandchildren, that board is so important. And yes, we go through the same process with them. And let me say this about those folks on the State Board of Education. As a member of the Texas Senate, I make the same salary I made when I was in the Texas House, and that is $600 a month. I knew the salary when I ran, I'm not complaining. Those members of the State Board of Education, they make the handsome sum of $0 a month. They, man, they work hard with huge districts. And we need to support those guys. I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you.
Okay, Karen, probably one more question, and we'll have to wrap it up.
All right. Sorry, folks, we're getting cut off. Leslie Fitzpatrick asks, if the Senate and House are unable to agree on maps during this third session, will there be yet another session, or will the redistricting automatically go to the LRB to draw the maps?
That is a great question, and I apologize, the answer's complicated. But walk with me, you guys are smart people, you'll follow this. So I mentioned to you that the LRB, those five statewide elected officials, four plus the speaker, I mentioned to you that they draw the lines if we can't get it done. Normally, and here's what the law says, if the, the Texas Constitution says, if the legislature does not agree on maps for the House, Senate, State Board of Education in the first regular session after receipt of the census data. If we don't do that in the regular session, after we get the census data, then the LRB kicks in. So think about that. When they wrote that back in the 50s, they knew that we would get the census data at the end of that decennial year, at the end of 2000, or 2001, in this case. They knew we'd get the data at the end of 2020 or early 2021. And so the next regular session will be the 2021 session, where we draw the maps, right? And it says, if we don't get that done, it goes to that board. That's the backstop. But in this case, we didn't get the data during, before the 2021 session. So if you literally read the terms of the Texas Constitution, it says, if the legislature does not draw the lines for the House and Senate within, in the first regular session after receipt of the data, it goes to the LRB. So if you read that closely, it says, the first regular session after we receive the census data, well, that's going to be the next session in 2023. You see what I'm saying? So it's, we're in a unique situation. So to answer, so because of that, this time, we, as we read the Constitution, if we don't get these maps drawn, there will not be a legislative redistricting board to do it until 2023. So that means, yes, I believe the governor will keep calling us back in special sessions until we get it done, as he should.
Thank you so much.
And then one more thing, I'll say that, I'll say one more, one more thing about that, I'm sorry, because this seems kind of unusual. So let's say we get it done this, this special session, we draw the maps, we have the 2022 election in this process. We're probably going to have to go back in 2023 and pass them again, just to comply with the Texas Constitution. But for this cycle, for 2021, yeah, we believe it's going to be done in a special session. Maybe this one, maybe the next one. But the governor will keep calling us back until we get it done.
Thank you, Senator Hughes. I think we're all a lot more educated on the redistricting process, and really appreciate your participation. And I want to say thank you to Chairman Click. I know she had to leave, but wanted to say thank you to her, too. Thank you for all your hard work, Senator Hughes. I know this is, this has been a very long session. And we really want to thank y'all so much.
Oh, so we appreciate you so much. I've said it before, but I mean it. Your involvement matters on these calls and the session and the process. I know I'm talking to people who do this. I'm telling Noah about the flood, but your involvement matters. It is, listen, it's made a difference. We have these victories like Senate Bill 1, my goodness, like the Harbby Bill, like the social media bill, like critical race theory, so many things you've worked on. Your voices have been heard. And listen, Texas, and I'm telling you this, future generations of Texans are better off because of what you've done. So thank you. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, it's time for our action items. And our fearless leader, Toni Ann DeShiel, she had the action item. She said, be sure to tell them to go to your county and your local areas and figure out how the redistricting will be done for your county, for your commissioners, for whatever districts that you have, the school districts. And then ask who's in charge in your, in that area. And so who's in charge? If there will be public input, number two, and when will the maps be shown? Toni Ann was adamant, locally, we can make an impact, and we can start having influence if we'll get involved in those local districts as well. So that's y'all's action item. And we will have a call next week. We'll see what happens between now and then, and see if we have maps to talk about. But I want to thank everybody for participating, and especially Senator Hughes and Chairman Click and the whole team. So thank y'all so much. And we'll see y'all next week.
Thank you, Beeth.